Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special board meeting of Wednesday, November 13th, 2024. We will start with the land acknowledgement of traditional territory, and I will ask Superintendent Plafer, please.
Simcoe County District School Board acknowledges situated on the traditional land of the Anishnaabik people. The Anishnaabik include the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Bodo Autamie nations, notably known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Anuut people.
Thank you. And now we will ask you to rise for the National Anthem. If you're able, the National Anthem is courtesy of Georgian Bay District Secondary School. I will now ask Superintendent Plafer to read our statement of respect.
The Simcoe County District School Board is committed to creating a culture of belonging, engagement, and success for all through deliberate actions and an intentional focus in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Simcoe County District School Board of Trustees will conduct meetings in an inclusive and respectful manner that upholds the principles of respect for human rights and allows all members, staff, and guests to participate fully regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, age, ability, and gender.
Thank you very much. We are at item number four on our agenda, which is roll call. We do have regrets this evening from Student Trustee Lad. We have electronic participation tonight from Trustee Rafiq and Trustee Wilson, and we have an authorized absence of Trustee Bytes. So with that, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Oh, sorry, one bit of business, I forgot. Because Vice Chair Rafiq is joining us electronically tonight, we do need a Vice Chair pro tem. Trustee Foley, please.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Powell.
Okay, thank you. Is there a seconder for that nomination? Thank you, Trustee Strong and Trustee Powell, will you accept that nomination?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you very much. So conveniently located right beside me to fill in the role for Vice Chair this evening. So thank you for that. So with that, we do need the approval of the agenda. Is there someone who would like to move the agenda? Thank you, Trustee Connor, seconded by Trustee Talbot. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? And that carries, thank you. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest for tonight's meeting? Okay, seeing none, we then go on to item B on our agenda is Recommendations for Action, and it is Report of the Public Session of the Audit Committee Meeting Held Monday, November the 4th, 2024. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Van Nisbent, please.
Thank you, through the chair, to the table. With your permission, I will be inviting various special guests up here to join me to help with the presentation. So tonight before you, we have the audited financial statements and the recommendation thereon that was presented at Audit Committee last Monday. Another year complete. Thanks to staff for all of their effort and to BDO, our auditors, for their efforts in supporting our team in meeting the tight timelines that the ministry provides. So tonight, I'm going to start by inviting BDO to come up. We have Carrie Graham, partner with BDO, and Andrea Nos, our Senior Manager from the audit team. And they will just give a brief comment and highlight of the audit, and then we will follow that with Controller Landry will then run us through the highlights of the statements.
Okay, thank you very much. Please join us at the table.
So I'm Andrea Nos from BDO, as mentioned, the external auditing firm. And it's my pleasure to provide you with our report on the audited financial statements of the school board for the year ended August 31st, 2024. As a Senior Manager, I'm responsible for the day-to-day supervision of the audit and being the main liaison between our firm and the staff of the school board throughout the audit process. So the purpose of my presentation here tonight is to provide a brief overview of the audit process and the results of the audit. As in previous years, we completed the bulk of our procedures during the month of October, and we're pleased to report that we did not encounter any problems, and we received the full cooperation of management and staff during the audit. We also found the books and records to be in good order. Any questions that arose during the audit were all appropriately answered, and the whole process went very smoothly. At the end of the audit process, we met with the management to discuss the results of the audit and review a draft of the financial statements in detail. We discussed any outstanding matters, and we finalized the audit and the draft financial statements. So then the next step was to meet with the Audit Committee, as mentioned, on November 4th, at which time we reviewed the results of the audit in detail and discussed any questions that the committee members had. The financial statements are a summary of the day-to-day transactions for the year that are recorded in the books and records of the school board. Management is responsible for ensuring that those transactions are properly recorded and that the books and records are properly maintained. Our responsibility as your auditors is to perform our audit procedures and to give the board an opinion as to whether the financial statements are a fair summary of the year's transactions. And our formal audit report is on pages three and four of the financial statements. And it's set out in the second part of the first section of that report and states that in our opinion, the consolidated financial statements of Simcoe County District School Board as at and for the year ended August 31st, 2024 are prepared in all material respects in accordance with the basis of accounting described in the summary of significant accounting policies attached to the consolidated financial statements. And that's what's referred to as a clean audit opinion, indicating that we're in agreement with the financial statements as presented and that we don't have any problems to report as a result of our audit. So that concludes my report. If there's any questions on the audit or on our audit report, then I'd be happy to address them at this time.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. Always positive to hear that and to hear a good story, so that's great, thank you very much. Are there any questions for our auditors at this point from trustees around the table? Trustee Armstrong, please.
Thank you, through you, to our audit, or I am on the Audit Committee, so I did get to hear the full report and the details. And I just want to clarify something for the rest of the members of the board, that the purpose of the audit is, of course, is legislated, we're required to do it, but an audit basically, I guess, in simple terms, shows that financially we are in, the organization's in control, that there's not things that are withstanding or suspect. Number one, I want to, I always am looking for that word, is there any possibility of embezzlement, those sort of issues? So I've been on the board many years, and I have to say that in my historical context, this board has always been in control. There's been, as far as I can tell, there's been no untoward loss of control of the financial responsibility of our resources. And as far as embezzlement, I don't think this has ever happened. So I guess my question, or for clarification, does that happen with other school boards? And I would think in their work as professional accountants, public accountants, that's something in businesses, not necessarily institutions, that that does occur. So I just wanted to clarify that, that yes, we are, we have a historical context of that, which takes a lot of work for the many, many staff that we have and the resources, the many hundreds of millions of dollars that go through the pathway from the government to our employees, through salaries and other aspects, and the money we do collect through our schools for fundraising and those sort of things. I just think that we should be congratulating our business staff to show that they have no concerns with the consolidated financial state, because that is a huge accomplishment with an organization of this size.
So I think there was a question in there, the part about the other school boards. So is this the norm to get a clean audit, or is this the exception, or is it becoming more the norm?
It's been the norm in my experience, but of course, I can't speak, we only audit, you know, a selection of school boards, so I can't speak, of course, for all the school boards, or school boards at all. And a financial statement audit also is not focused on that type of issue. We look for, you know, risks of material misstatement, but we don't look specifically, okay, is there embezzlement? Like, it might come to light if it was there, but it's not the purpose of the audit itself.
Follow-up, Trustee Armstrong?
I'm just saying, for an institution of this size, it's a very difficult task to make sure that the statements are accurate and everything's up to date and that the aspect of control is there. And embezzlement, I mean, that's just something that's more political issue. I know it's not necessarily the purpose, but we want to be sure that our resources are, the financial statements are accurate and that we are using the funds that we have said we're using and how we're using them is correct. So anyway, I'm just saying, such a huge organization, that it's a lot of work to make sure that those things are in control.
Yes, absolutely. It is definitely a lot of work, and congratulations to management and the team for all the work that they put into getting us to this point and providing such, you know, high-quality materials for us to use to do our audit.
Thank you. Superintendent Van Nisbent, please.
Thank you, and through the chair, to the table. I believe Trustee Armstrong may be recalling that in the past with the sector, there has been a struggle or a challenge with qualified financial statements when it comes to the school-generated funds, because it has historically been dealing with cash out at the schools and whatnot. This school board put in place many, many years ago, the proper controls, central oversight and whatnot, which has allowed us to have that clean audit opinion for 14 years that I've been, I've been here.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions from trustees at the table? Or online? I don't see any. So there are two recommendations for this evening, first being that the board approved the audited, oh, sorry, Superintendent Van Nisbent, sorry.
Through the, through the chair. With your permission, I'll have Controller Landry come up and run through some of the highlights of the actual financial statements themselves.
Okay, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair Lloyd, through you to the table. I'm going to echo Superintendent Van Nisbent and thank our BDO team, as well as our Business Services team. Carrie and Andrea's extensive knowledge of our board and their commitment to completing the task at hand has remained unchanged in the years we've dealt with them, and it's very much greatly appreciated. Jacquelinene and her team also excel at pulling together the information required in a timely fashion, which you can imagine is very difficult feat, trying to get that all organized, and we do a great job of working as a team to get that done. So let's get started. So we're going to go through the financial, Statement of Financial Position, otherwise known as the balance sheet, the Statement of Operations, the income statement, with high-level comments on some of the variances, and defines some terms that may not be familiar or common to everybody. And I'm going to stop after every statement and kind of ask you guys if you have any questions. The notes are also a very integral part of our financial statements and give a lot more further detail, if you want to take a look at them, and they'll give some context on the numbers that we are being presented. So the Consolidated Statement of Financial Position is on PDF page 38, or BDO Statement, page 5. There are three areas that kind of against each other. So our cash balances are down, our accounts receivable balances are up, and our accounts payable balances are up. Those three accounts are similarly always interrelated, and it's simply a timing issue of funds coming in, funds going out, payments going out. In our balance of AP this year, there is also a ministry-directed labor provision for unsettled union negotiations and Bill 124 payments that were accrued as mandated by the ministry. New this year is an account called Temporary Borrowings. These are amounts drawn on a new operating loan to facilitate land purchases in the 2324 for Alcona Elementary, Aurelia Elementary, and Wasaga Beach Secondary School. Going down a little bit further, the deferred revenue is down. Again, this is more of a timing thing of our land purchases, which left us with a decrease in our overall EDC charges. Deferred Capital Contributions are up. These are funds received and recognized with the amortization of capital. Employee Future Benefit is our old system of retirement gratuity that was retired and frozen back in 2012. So as our staff leave, those benefits slowly will reduce, and they also include sick leave and other compensated absences that have been frozen since 2012. Net long-term debt, there is no net long-term debt in the current year, as capital now is funded solely by the ministry. Current debt is guaranteed and funded by the ministry, and payments remaining on the existing long-term debt will be paid off by March of 2039. The asset retirement obligation, which was new last year, will be, has increased this year as a result of inflation on the estimated costs. The valuation for the increase was done using a ministry-provided inflation rate. Overall inventory is down. So back in 2023, there was a separate recognition of the value of the ministry-provided PPE during the COVID times, which was on hand at August 31st. At any given time, we usually carried up to a month's worth of PPE, but this is no longer the case that we hold inventory. We bring PPE in, and it immediately goes out to the school, so we're not holding any inventory. Overall capital assets are up. There was an addition at Lake Simcoe Public School. There were renovations that occurred at Innistil Secondary School, Eastview Secondary School, Barry North Collegiate Institute, as well as Ernest Cumberland Elementary School, and various smaller projects. Land costs are up as a result of new builds in the current year, which include Alcona Elementary purchase, Aurelia Elementary purchase, and Wasaga Beach Secondary School purchase. Construction in process is up due to the builds at Wasaga Beach Public School and the beginning of the build at Oro Medonte Elementary School, as well as some smaller projects. Overall properties, we did not sell any in the current fiscal year. And on there, you'll also see accumulated surplus, but I'm going to speak to that at the end. So that's a wrap-up of the first statement. Does anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions for the information shared? Don't see any, don't see any, so please go ahead, thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to the Consolidated Statement of Operations, which is on PDF page 39, or BDO Statement, page 6. There is also an Appendix C, which you'll see on PDF page 72, that represents the variances between budget and actual in the fiscal year of 2324. The numbers that I'm presenting to you now are changes in the revenue and spending year over year. So it doesn't involve the budget, it's year-over-year spending. So grants are up over the previous year for multiple reasons, one of which being the Bill 124 on the union contract settlements. Enrollment increases, last year we were at about 55,600 students for 2023 versus 2024, we were up to 56,300. So that necessitated an increase in grants. There was also other non-staff benchmark increases. Provincial Grants Other has an overall increase as well, related to the Bill 124 and union contract negotiations. Our SGF, or School-Generated Funds, are up again over the previous year and getting back to pre-pandemic levels, which is a result of higher food sales and more school trips, which have aided increasing the fund generation. You'll also see that offset down a little bit lower in the SGF expenses. Other fees and revenues are up, which is related to the timing, the timing of the use of EDC transfer revenues, which is up over the prior year. And revenue from EDCs is only recognized when it's, when it's used as opposed to when it's collected. Collection is ongoing, but it's only recognized when it's used. On the expenses side, we have transportation that is up, which is due predominantly to increased bus routes and higher fuel costs in the year. Other expenses are down. In the prior year, we had an accrual ministry mandated for Bill 115 for EFO and the ministry-mandated labor provisions last year. When these payments were made in the current year, they weren't booked to other expenses, they were booked within all of the salary accounts, so you're not seeing a duplication of that expense. It's just the removal of one expense, putting it into the actual accounts. Note 13 by object. If you look on page PDF, page 64, BDO Statement, page 31, this is kind of a different way to look at the expenses. It's expenses by type of ministry funding category. It does show us that 88% of our expenditures continue to be related to salaries, wages, and benefits of employees. That percentage is actually up over the prior year due to the increased salary amounts shown related to the Bill 124 payments and union contract settlements and the accruals that were made. That takes care of the second statement. Is there any questions?
Are there any questions from trustees? I don't see any, so continue, thanks.
Okay. We're going to move on to our accumulated surplus. In note 10, you'll see accumulated surplus, PDF page 62, BDO Statement, page 29. So under unavailable for, or, sorry, pardon me, available for compliance unappropriated, we have, you'll see it was up about 1.3 million, which ties to our operational plan. Cumulatively, we have added an average of 1.2 million per year over the last five years, driven by our strategic priorities. To put an add into perspective, $1 million increase is approximately 0.1% of our overall revenues. Facility renewal, under facility renewal, we have funds set aside for projects related to preventative maintenance and site improvements that we were unable to complete in the fiscal year. We use funds in the current year for preventative maintenance, such as painting, tech shops, air handlers, and portable repairs. Other board appropriated is made up of various items, such as school basic budget, the energy stabilization funds, which increase when we come in under budget on utilities and we put it into surplus to help years with higher utility costs. There is also contractual local priorities, opening and closing of school funds set aside over and above what the ministry provides us with for when we're opening new schools. Committed capital projects, some examples of that are work done at the education centers, such as HVAC, site improvements, and so forth. Unavailable for compliance, this is externally appropriated surplus, which cannot be touched, and includes revenues recognized for land, offset by the cost of land, school-generated funds, and amounts to be recovered, which includes another year of the retirement gratuity amortization. And that is the final part of accumulated surplus.
Any questions? Trustee Armstrong, please.
May I have clarification in regards to the retirement gratuity? When does that, how many years to go before that is wrapped up as far as that, those surplus, as far as the payouts are, maybe for Superintendent Van Nisbent, but it's not something that will be always there, it's going to get to a certain end.
I assume it's those who have entitlements, once they've time out and retire, then we pay them out, is that correct? Yeah, so when those people with entitlement retire out, then we'll be done.
So possibly 10 more years, or?
Superintendent Van Nisbent, any idea?
Thank you, and through the chair to Trustee Armstrong. I can't give a specific date, because just, it depends, somebody could decide to retire when they hit their time, or they could decide to carry on. And at the time that it was frozen, you had, we had amounts ranging all the way from $300, because they had just started to accumulate time. So they would have been earlier in their career, as well as individuals that were close to the end and have retired at this point. So we still have, I want to say 1,600, 1,700?
1,678.
1,678, I was close. Employees that are still have amounts sitting there waiting for their retirement or leaving with the board.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Okay, don't see any. So are we ready for the motion now? Perfect. All right, so the first motion related to the audited financial statements reads that the board approved the audited financial statements for the year ended August 31st, 2024, as set out in Appendix B of Report Number AUD-D-1, audited 2023-24 financial statements dated November the 4th, 2024. Is there a mover for that recommendation? Thank you, Trustee Talbot. Is there a seconder? Trustee Gromit, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? And that carries. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us. Have a good evening. Okay, Superintendent Van Nisbent, you have?
Thank you, and more special guests from the Audit Committee. So the next report that we went through, or reports we went through at the Audit Committee was with regards to our internal audit, an update and recommendation for the multi-year internal audit plan. Excuse me. We've invited Manager Jeff Henderson and Senior Auditor Christine Adams to join us tonight to share some of the highlights of the work that we've done, that we're doing and we're planning to do, which has had a large focus on risk assessment and risk management. And with the permission of the chair, I'd like to invite Manager Henderson and Senior Auditor Adams to the table.
Yes, please join us, thank you.
Thank you very much for the introduction, Superintendent Van Nisbent. My name is Jeff Henderson, as introduced, and this is Christine Adams. We work for the Regional Internal Audit Team. If you're wondering what that is, we're a team hosted by and internal to Simcoe County District School Board. We provide internal audit services to nine school boards in central Ontario. Our role is to provide independent, objective assurance and consulting services designed to add value and improve the operations of the school boards that we work with. We focus on risk management, control, and governance processes to help the boards meet their strategic objectives. As previously shared with the Audit Committee, I'd like to highlight some of the important work we're currently doing with Simcoe County District School Board, specifically in the area of strategic risk management. As part of our ongoing efforts to support the board, we've been working closely with the senior leadership team here at SCDSB to identify and assess key risks that could impact the board's strategic goals. So the exercise that was undertaken culminated in a list of four high-level areas that the board considered. Detail on these can be found in Appendix C of the internal audit package as part of the Audit Committee package. For reference, the four items were human rights, cybersecurity, staff recruitment and retention, and business continuity. So in order to focus on our mandate and with the full support of management and the Audit Committee as part of our 24-26 multi-year plan, this fall, we are following up with one of those key risk areas in assisting the board and management and staff with the creation and deployment of a business continuity plan. Additionally, as part of the 25-26 portion of the multi-year plan, we will be operationalizing the risk assessment, focusing at the department level with the end goal of creating a detailed risk register that will ultimately position the board as one of the leaders in the sector in terms of a comprehensive risk management framework. We're quite pleased with the progress so far and the collaborative approach that we've been able to take with the senior team on these important initiatives. Through our continued reporting to the Audit Committee, we'll keep the board apprised as we move forward. With that said, if there's any specific questions that you have in regards to the material that was presented to the Audit Committee, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and for your presentation. Are there questions from trustees with respect to that? Trustee Strong, please.
Thank you, and thanks for the information that you provided, and I'd say that the four areas that are being investigated and worked on are very important areas. I was just wondering, how do we identify these four areas? What's that process and who makes that decision?
So this process was a collaborative process that we've rolled out not only at Simcoe County District School Board, but a number of boards that we've worked with across the region. It's a process that we have, we have the assistance of consulting firm M&amp;P. We have facilitated workshops that we do with the Admin Council, where we kind of brainstorm these in a facilitated session, where we come up with some common vocabulary as far as the as the definition of risk, and then using that definition kind of brainstorming. And these were kind of the ones that percolated out of that. There were a number of other items, but these were based on those workshops, the four areas of prime concern for the senior team.
Follow-up? As a quick follow-up, were they identified as the prime concern because they were like the largest risk and also the highest likelihood?
That's correct. According to kind of the metrics that we use with an impact and likelihood assessment, those buckets are considered to be the prime risks for the school board at this point. Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Don't see any. I just had one question, and I know these are the ones you are planning to look forward to, but has there been any thought or discussion on the risk of AI to an organization like a school board? Because it's something that many school boards are starting to grapple with and we're starting to deal with. And so is that something that will be covered off through these or is it something that we'll be looking for to in the future?
Thank you very much. That wasn't a specific focus of this exercise. I do know, speaking with board management, that AI is on their radar as far as a risk, and it was identified through some of the IT security pieces that we looked at as part of the strategic risk assessment, which again did make it on, onto the risk register as a risk, but weren't kind of bucketed into these top four priorities. So, but as far as what the board's planning to do around AI, I would have to defer to Superintendent Van Nispen if there's any specifics.
Superintendent Van Nispen?
Thank you, and through the, through the chair to the chair. So AI has been a hot topic, if you will, throughout the sector. Definitely any of the sessions, PD sessions and whatnot that we've had for COSBO, for code and whatnot, AI has been on the agenda. So it is something that is at the forefront. I would have to, from a technical standpoint as to what we're working on, look to Superintendent Sidloski, who looks after our IT department, and she would probably have more of a technical hands-on as opposed to myself. It's just, again, it is, it is a topic that is constantly being visited.
Thank you. So then I think what I'm looking for was confirmation that we're aware of it, we're monitoring it, and we have strategies in place from an organizational standpoint to manage the risk associated with it. Superintendent Sidloski?
Through the chair, we are absolutely monitoring it. We are aware of it, and we continue to look at how students are using AI, how we control access, and the different types of access points into the system and our network.
Confident that it's on the radar and we're monitoring it, that's great. So thank you very much. Are there any further questions? Okay, I don't see anything. Anything further, Superintendent Van Nispen? So we do have a recommendation coming forward that the board approved the proposed regional internal audit plan 2024-26 as set out in Appendix A of Report Number AUD-D-2, internal audit update dated November the 4th, 2024. Is there a mover for that? Thank you, trustee Armstrong. Seconded by trustee Harrigan. Call the question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? And that carries. So that has completed our special board agenda for this evening. The future business is listed on the agenda, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the special board meeting. Thank you, trustee Strong, trustee Talbot, all those in favor? Thank you, and we are adjourned. So just five minutes to set up for the program meeting, please.
Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Program Standing Committee tonight, Wednesday, November 13th. And we will begin with the land acknowledgement of the traditional territory, and that is being read by board chair Jody Lloyd.
Simcoe County District School Board acknowledges that we are situated on the traditional land of the Anishnaab people. The Anishnaab include the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Botoamie nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit people.
Thank you. We will now have the statement of respect read, and that will be read by board chair Jody Lloyd.
The Simcoe County District School Board is committed to creating a culture of belonging, engagement, and success for all through deliberate actions and intentional focus in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Simcoe County District School Board of Trustees will conduct meetings in an inclusive, respectful manner that upholds the principle of respect for human rights and allows all members, staff, and guests to participate fully regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, age, ability, and gender.
Thank you, and that takes us to item number three, which is roll call. This evening, we have electronic participation by vice chair Rafiq and trustee Wilson. We have regrets from student trustee Lad, and we have an authorized absence from trustee Bytes. And that takes us to approval of the agenda. Do I have a mover to approve the agenda? Trustee Lloyd, seconded by trustee Talbot. Okay. And I will ask all in favor of that? Any opposed? And that is carried. That takes us to declaration of conflicts of interest. Do we have any this evening? I don't see any. Thank you. We don't have any presentations or delegation. We don't have any items for closed session this evening, and we don't have any items for decision. So that takes us to items for information. And our first item is mental health and wellbeing student engagement, PRO-I-1, and I will invite Superintendent Malby to join us, please. And he is there. Wonderful.
I'm ready.
Great.
And thank you. And through the chair, I would like to invite three guests to the table to assist with this presentation. So Louise Pike, wellbeing facilitator, Logan, a grade 12 student from Simcoe Shores, and Veronica, a grade 11 student from Bear Creek. And not, not with me at the table, but honorable mention are Veronica's parents, who are sitting right here to watch the proceedings, so.
That's wonderful. So please join us. It's always great to see people join us in the audience, so thank you for attending.
So we are very excited about bringing information on the mental health and wellbeing student engagement sessions to trustees this evening. I do want to take just a second to thank the organizing committee under the leadership of Louise Pike and mental health lead Dawn Franks. It took an entire committee to run these seven sessions, and they included Sue Deco, Melody Barton, Ashley Ann Merritt, Helen Harkes, Dawn Latandras, and Deb Shackel, and a variety of educators from across the system came together to put this on in collaboration with students. So over the last week of August and throughout September, this committee hosted seven student voice conferences for secondary to elementary students and staff. When students have a voice, when they're meaningfully engaged at school, their overall sense of wellbeing improves. And tonight, you'll hear from those students, Logan and Veronica, but you also should mention that the student trustees were also integral parts of those symposiums and attended and certainly had a role in leading the elementary sessions as well. So very excited to talk about their engagement. There will be an activity for you, so just so you're aware, you will be up and doing an activity. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Pike. To Veronica.
Student engagement is an ongoing process that centers every student's lived experience and voice, positioning them as valued experts to influence outcomes that affect them. We're going to start with an activity that will look at different ways that students can be engaged. Behind your table, you will find boxes. Each box represents one of eight different levels of engagement, and your job will be to build a tower, starting with what you think is the lowest level engagement, all the way up to what you think is the highest level of engagement. Now, let's begin. Please move to the box closest to you. You will have three minutes to complete your task.
Can I go and join in with one?
Sure.
Manipulation. 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 So there's a 30-second warning, just a 30-second warning.
Trustee Gromit, there's always one person that says that.
All right. I think we'll start to have a look at our towers, or maybe you lay them out on the floor so that you could see them in a hierarchy. You're welcome to give a high five to someone near you if you got it correct. The very bottom of the tower is manipulation. Adult-led, youth do is directed, but they don't understand the purpose. Next would be decoration. So the adults have the ideas, the youth understand the purpose, but they have no say. And we've done this activity with a number of educators. We also did it with superintendents last week, and oftentimes, we can think of some things that are decoration that happen in school. Tokenism is adult-led, youth are asked for opinions. Assigned but informed, adult-led, youth understand the purpose, and they have a role in that decision-making as well. Consulted and informed, adult-led, but youth are consulted and told how their input will be used to inform adult decisions. And I think that's a really integral piece of, as we move up the ladder, when the students see the impact of their voice, helps them to continue to be more engaged. Number six, adults initiated and shared decisions with youth. Youth, adult-led, but decision-making is shared with the youth. And this is usually where everybody gets it the wrong way around. So number seven is youth initiated and directed. And then at the very top is youth initiated and shared decisions with adults. And this is often a hotly debated one, like why is it not the other way around? Because if youth are initiating and directing it, then surely they must be most engaged. But what the research says is that it's those decisions that they can make with adults that actually give them more leverage, because adults have access to different information, experience. So it's actually they're more engaged when they are making those shared decisions as equal partners. All right. So it is important to note that the latter metaphor of the model should not be assumed to mean that higher levels of participation are always better in every context. Instead, as the research correctly points out, there are some real-life situations where different circumstances call for different levels of participation. In some contexts, a lower level of participation might be necessary to build some skills in both the adults and the youth. So this is the model of student engagement from School Mental Health Ontario, and I like that it positions every student at the center of the diagram. Every student is an agent in defining their engagement in school initiatives. The next two rungs that wrap around every student highlight the foundations of student engagement, recognizing, validating, and respecting every student's intersecting identities, backgrounds, and experiences. The foundations also highlight the importance of flexibility, nurturing student strengths, making decisions informed by them, and adapting strategies to meet their ever-evolving needs. In the outermost rung are the various degrees of engagement, so similar to the latter, but rather than being a hierarchy, we see them in a circle. It's important to offer multiple entry points for students, enabling them to engage in initiatives that align with their own interests and abilities. Opportunities may also incorporate multiple degrees of engagement, offering students diverse skill development, commitment levels, and influences over outcomes. This model is the anchor for the work that we are doing with student engagement and mental health promotion. And now we're going to hear from Logan and Victoria, or sorry, Veronica, to describe how this is coming to life in Simcoe County, specifically their experience at our summer symposium in August where we had students representing all 16 secondary schools as well as Simcoe Shores.
On the first day, we began with a keynote by the brilliant minds at Unlearn. They started by dismantling ideas about racial segregation in Canada using their own experiences. We then moved on to mental health literacy and design thinking, where we learned what it means to take control of our mental health. Unlearn continued on with a workshop later in the day where we discussed stereotyping and how it affects everyone with a continued focus on removing oppression. On the second day, we started off with outdoor activities, including the low ropes of the board office. There, we relied on teamwork to complete our tasks, and by the end, we were engaged enough to complete the low ropes in time. After our outdoor activities, we dove back into mental health literacy and design thinking, where we expanded on ideas of how to combat our daily struggles, which prepared us for the days to come. Now on to Veronica.
On day three, we had the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, Thrive SMH, and Design Thinking Sessions, which taught us about boundaries, how and when we're able to support peers' mental health, and promoting mental health within our school communities. In groups, we discussed each of our ideas on each topic. With all of these insightful thoughts being shared, all of us were able to see a new perspective and takeaway from each lesson. On the final day, we presented initiative ideas to senior leaders to improve overall wellbeing within our schools. Because of these symposiums, we were able to take our ideas and actually turn them into action plans, which have continued into the school, school year. As many ambassadors have taken leadership roles or started their own mental health wellbeing teams or clubs. We are going to come back together later this month with teachers from our schools to work as a team and make these action plans come to life. Now, back on to Logan.
The secondary students who attended the summer symposium were, are asked to consider pursuing independent portfolio generation and earning the GPP three O peer leadership and support credit. We will have the opportunity to use a gradeless interview process to be awarded this credit centrally. This impacts me specifically as I am short on credits and have a lot of work to do to graduate this year, as well as how it looks on a college application. This could make a huge difference for me and other youth specifically in alternative school programs who have a lot of work ahead of them in every situation. We are coming, sorry, that's the wrong place. We also had this opportunity to continue our participation in return as leaders for the elementary symposiums that were held in September. These sessions were for four elementary students and two educators from each school, which is over three hundred students and a hundred and seventy educators. Each day included opportunities to participate in outdoor learning to build their mental health literacy and plan for student-led initiatives throughout the 2024 and 2025 school year. Here's a video to show you what it was all about.
I guess I just want to finish up by saying thank you very much for sharing time with us this evening, and we hope that you will wear your Mental Health Matters green t-shirts with pride as we work together to support mental health and wellbeing in Simcoe County.
And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you very much. That was a great report, and thank you for the t-shirts. They are really beautiful, so I think we'll all look forward to wearing those. Do we have any questions? Okay, trustee Strong.
Thank you. Thanks so much for joining us today and for your presentation and for all of the great work that you're doing within the schools. It's very much appreciated by everyone around this table. And I heard some really great feedback from elementary students on the symposium and how cool it was that like older students were there. So thanks for that as well. You mentioned in the presentation that you had various action plans, and I was just wondering if you could give us an example of what one or two of those looks like and how that might roll out in the school.
Okay, through the chair to trustee Lloyd. I think that the action plans that students came up with were the pitches that they gave to the dragons, the senior leaders. So for example, some of them were to find out what was already existing in their school and how they could amplify mental health supports and services that were already there. One of the schools looked at ways that they could find, or ways that they could amplify student access to mental health supports in their schools. They said that many students didn't know what was available, so they wanted to highlight that for them because that was one of the things that they learned in our symposium.
Okay, all right, Chair Lloyd.
Thank you, and very pleased to have you here this evening, so thank you for coming. My question is, so we did this at the beginning of the school year, we did it in August and then September. And so is there a plan to reconnect with the students or to follow through with them as the year progresses or to reconnect with them? Because these initiatives are so, so positive and so matter, and so it's always nice to keep people motivated and the flow going. So just if you could share what's happening.
Okay, Superintendent Malby.
Yes, thank you through the chair to Chair Lloyd. Yes, so what we heard from the students very clearly on those days was that they wanted that support, they wanted the feedback, and they want visits to make sure that the, the work continues, and they also want to reconvene as a group. So we have two additional dates planned to bring them back, one at the end of November to make sure that plans are formed and underway. And then secondly, I think the next one is in April, sort of as a celebration, and certainly would invite trustees to attend that. We also, Ms. Pike and Ms. Moreau, the two wellbeing facilitators, also visited our area superintendent meeting, I think that was two weeks ago. And gave our superintendent colleagues a list of schools, a list of students who are involved in those activities, and then a way to what they call supercharge. So information for them to go into schools on their visits so that they could ask specific questions to the actual students and the staff that were part of the initiatives. So we are bringing everyone back, and we hope that when people go out, they're asking about those things.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? I'm just looking online. I don't see any. I just wanted to ask, I know our, our two student trustees that are here this evening also attended the symposium, so I wonder if you had any, just a comment about your experience. I can start with student trustee Simmons, okay?
Yeah, thank you, and through your chair to the table. The symposium was a unique experience that allowed students to connect with other students from all over the board. And we were able to forge connections and listen to mental health and wellbeing supports available for students throughout the board, and also see how similar or alike they were.
That's great. Student trustee Shaw, did you have any comments?
I'll just second everything today. It was awesome. Yeah, I really enjoyed the symposium, and I'm glad that we all get to reconnect because I found like a lot of people there, like I connected with. It was nice to meet more people who were like, like that. Yeah, thank you.
That's great. Good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you so much for joining us. That's a great news story, and thank you for the activity. I don't know if there wasn't a winner, not that I'm competitive. All right.
We'll just say it was trustee Grummet, we'll just go with that, right?
So we did win. That's all that matters. Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to item number two, 2023-24 EQUAO achievement results and trends over time, pro-I dash two, and that will be Superintendent Malby.
Thank you, and through the chair. This EQUAO, EQAO report serves to inform trustees about the overall achievement of the Simcoe County District School Board in the 2023-2024 EQAO assessment in the areas of primary reading, writing, and math, which are grades one through three, junior reading, writing, and math, which is grades four through six, grade nine math, as well as the Ontario Secondary School Literacy Test. The EQAO assessments are based on Ontario curriculum for grades three, six, nine, and ten, but are certainly rooted in the continuum of learning that begins in kindergarten. Although the assessments are done in three, six, nine, and ten in those grades, they're in fact seen as a primary, a junior, and an intermediate assessment. That includes the learning that occurs in each grade. We recognize the importance of benchmark data, such as EQAO and the role it plays in informing staff and community of where students have excelled and where there is work to be done on our part in the areas of math and language. I would also draw your attention to a section in the report called Understanding the Provincial Standard. So EQAO reports achievement in the forms of levels, levels one through four, and these are, can be equated to letter grades that you would traditionally see on a report card. So a child receiving a level one would be like receiving a D on a report card. Level two would be like a C, level three, which is deemed the provincial standard by the EQAO assessment, is a B, and then level four would be an A. You'll notice in the graphs in the report that have been presented in a manner to highlight the number of students that have achieved each of those levels. I did combine level A and B because those were exceeding the provincial standards of, of level three and four. This constitutes, when you take a look, a hundred percent of Scudsbury students in most areas. We continue to celebrate the achievement of each student as we know they strive to give their best during the EQAO assessments process, whether that is a student who has achieved a level one on, on EQAO or and verging on a level two, or a student that is achieving a level four. We recognize the work that is needed on their behalf as we strive for continued improvement for each student. I would like to recognize that the EQAO assessment data and language is trending downwards. In a provincial context, Scudsbury, Simcoe County District School Board does fall below some provincial results in areas, but the provincial data, just for context, is also trending downward in the same area. I think it is important to note that the one area that Scudsbury continues to achieve is in the OSSLT or the Secondary Literacy Test. Again, we do see that downward trend in primary and junior, but I think it's also important to highlight the success that when students come to a graduation requirement like the OSSLT, we are at the provincial average of eighty-four. Given that, there's a lot of work to do. I will speak to just now to some of the actions and strategies that we have undertaken. Since the inception of Right to Read Report, the Simcoe County District School Board has taken a measured approach to implementation of structured literacy. We strive to ensure the tiered supports we provide centrally are having impact prior to expanding those efforts. So I'll go through some of the supports that we have listed here. One is continued support and resources for primary division regarding structured literacy. And you would have, you may remember Superintendent Sammis coming to the table last year, and we had the activity with the phonemes and the phonological awareness. So structured, including screening tools, tech support, professional learning, and those are the reading facilitators and literacy facilitators that are in the schools doing that work right now. We continue to support professional learning and leading and mathematics for administrators and educators in the area of math content and action planning, and I won't get into too much detail because I believe there's a report right after me that will get into that detail. We do have a focus on the new, Scudsbury-created literacy scope and sequence document for grade seven and eight educators as that language curriculum was revamped in 2023. And that's an everyday resource for educators with lessons, practice assessments, and an OSSLT prep tool. Central staff still support schools on an individual basis with their school action and equity plans. So when schools get benchmark data like EQAO, they can drill down into different areas, and every school will have a different area. But our facilitators will go out, our central facilitators will go out and help with that professional learning and targeted professional learning. We still have PD with a focus on UFLY, and again, I'll drive you back to the previous report. You undertook that activity, but UFLY for CERT, so partnering with Superintendent Jacobs and the Special Education Department for small group, tier two and tier three interventions in the primary division. We continue to look at junior interventions in tier one and tier two, and as well as French immersion. So taking, we are again PD focused on that tier one and tier two supports for foundational literacy practices, and that's in the French immersion. We have recently purchased resources for both decodable and fluency tier one and tier two in-class instruction for the system. And again, our facilitators are out using those resources with those staff. And of course, we embed EQAO questions, practice questions, and assessments and processes, and we do that closer to the date to provide a comfort and conditioning for students who are taking the EQAO assessment. So lastly, just to reiterate, we do take a measured approach. The primary division is steeped in foundational instruction, structured literacy support, and as we see improvements that, that are being made, we expand and will be expanding and have expanded into the junior and intermediate grades, knowing that we can't accomplish a massive whole system change in one year. We need to see that our strategies are working before we will see those results. With that, happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Malby. Are there any questions? Oh, okay, Chair Lloyd.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. My question is a bit round. We have a lot of new Canadians and a lot of multi-language learners in our board and moving to Simcoe County. And so I'm just wondering with EQUAO if you can help me understand how they accommodate those students, right? Because it must be very overwhelming when you're trying to learn a new language and the test is in that language that you're trying to learn. And so I'm just wondering if you can give me some insights in how EQUAO supports those students or supports them in the test? Or what's being done to prepare those students for the test?
Okay, Superintendent Malby.
Sure, thank you, and through the chair to Chair Lloyd. So our population, according to EQAO, is around two percent, and they term it ELL, so not a term that we use, but that's the term that they use of students. So that population of students does achieve actually very well in, in EQAO and in report card and system data. So they do perform well. There are accommodations though, so schools do have scribes or people that would sit next to someone to, to read to and to write for those people, for, for those students, sorry.
Okay, follow-up Chair Lloyd? No, okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other, trustee Strong, please.
Thank you, and in your presentation, you answered my question about why level three and level four were lumped together. I'm still, like I'd be, I'm interested, I know that this is just a high-level report for this table. When you look at like the provincial dashboard, it shows that most students, like over fifty percent of students are achieving level three in math, in reading, for example, in primary division. And then it's hard when you separate level, or when you put level three and level four together to know where we are with the province, just because the data is not presented in the same way. So do you have, is there a way that you could provide clarity on that?
Okay, Superintendent Malby, please.
Thank you, and through the chair to trustee Shawna. I haven't had that data right in front of me, so I anticipated that question. I just wanted to, to make sure that the, that the provincial standard was clear in the report. But certainly, our level four, for, I can start with primary reading, so that runs at about eleven percent would be at a level, a level four of our primary reading. Primary writing is actually one percent, which is the same as the province at one percent when you take a look at that. Junior reading, level four is at eight percent, and writing at level four is thirteen percent.
Follow-up trustee Strong?
Okay, yes, so just as a follow-up, then we, we likely have, say, for primary reading division, fifty-seven percent of students at level three, which is the same as the provincial average.
Superintendent Malby, please.
Through the chair to trustee Strong, yes. Just we're different in the level, our level fours aren't quite the same as the province, and our level twos are a bit higher, those numbers.
Okay, okay, trustee Strong.
It's my understanding that you can get a lot more out of this data, like there's a lot more data to look at. Like when you can log into the provincial website, and we had a presentation from EQAO, I think, last year, and they talked about like all of the data points and sources and configurations and all of that kind of fun stuff. Can you just let me like tell us how we make use of the access to that data in the work that we're doing in our schools?
Superintendent Malby, please.
Thank you, and through the chair to trustee Strong. So essentially, there's a few ways that we support schools. So when we have something like Right to Read and structured literacy, that's something at the board level that we organize, that we support, that we resource, and that we go to schools and do that professional learning for everyone. So we've trained every second year, every kindergarten, grade one, grade two teacher in that sense. The other way is around the school action equity plan. So like I had mentioned before, our reading facilitators, our central staff, our principals, central principals will help schools not only develop their school action and equity plans, but then help them dig down into what that data looks like for individual schools, because every school may be different in what they're focusing on.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Chair Lloyd, please.
Thank you, and just as we've been sitting here, I've been on the EQUAO website, and it's very, you can pull up a fair bit of information there. And to me, it seems like we have really, really high participation rates, ninety-seven percent, ninety-six percent. And so I'm just wondering if you can clarify for us where our participation rate is compared to some other boards? Because historically, I've, I've heard that participation rates are higher. Because historically, I've heard that participation rates can really vary from board to board. So, you know, we're including all of our, you know, encouraging all of our students to participate in the testing, to participate fully, you know? And so I'm just wondering how we compare in that regard to other boards?
Okay, Superintendent Maltby, please.
Thank you, and through the chair to Chair Lloyd. So I don't have every other board at my fingertips right now, but I do know that we are above the provincial average, like you had just mentioned, in our participation rates. And I think that speaks to the commitment of staff to include all students or most students in that EQAO assessment. And that, to me, is an equity issue, and we should be including all students in that to the best of their ability. So we do have a higher participation rate, but again, I think that speaks to the commitment of staff and students.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Just looking online, I don't see any. Okay, thank you very much for that report, Superintendent Maltby. And that, all right, that takes us to item number three under Items for Information, 2024-25 Math Achievement Action Plan Pro-I-III, and that will be from Superintendent Fennel, please.
Good evening, and through you, Chair Gromit. To the table, I would like to invite Principal of School Effectiveness and Improving Student Performance in Mathematics, Marcy Duncan, and also our district math facilitator, Kit Luce, to share in this report.
I think we're just taking a moment to hand out some information.
It'll be just a moment before we need that, so I will just get us started. At Program Standing in October, we shared with you the measured impact of last year's Math Achievement Action Plan. This evening, we're pleased to share the updated 2425 Plan, which we will likely refer to from here on as the MAP. To support student achievement in mathematics, the Ministry of Education provides funding for the board math lead and five school-based math facilitators. The SCDSB supplements these positions with five additional school-based math facilitators, two district math leads, Principal of School Effectiveness in Improving Student Performance in Math. This demonstrates its commitment to excellence in teaching and learning math. Ministry funding also supports educators to participate in additional qualification courses in math, as well as the acquisition of a digital tool to support student learning. It is important to note that Ministry funding no longer supports educator release for professional development in math, which is a strategy through which we have realized the most significant system-wide shifts in educator knowledge, confidence, and changes in classroom practice. The funding for our Math Network Sessions, M2LRN, and subsequent school-based professional learning communities, which are PLCs, is a supplemental commitment of the SCDSB. So now, if I can draw your attention to the handout that you have, and we'll refer to that as a MAP. This plan provides a summary related to each of the ministry's three priority actions: teaching the curriculum with fidelity and through the high-impact instructional practices; building math content knowledge for teaching among educators; and being responsive to the needs of students through engaging and level-appropriate tasks. You will find these priority actions right at the top of the chart. Next, you will see the data-informed needs that the team identified related to each priority action. Multiple sources of data were used, such as report card, block check-in, and EQAO achievement, educator, student confidence and math attitude surveys, and 2024 Parent-School Climate Survey. In the next six on your chart are strategies that have been selected from a menu provided by the ministry to address the needs within our board. Once data was collected related to each priority action to determine needs and overarching strategies were selected to address those needs, specific actions were then identified at the system, school, and classroom levels to support the strategies selected. At the system level, math facilitators, Kit Luce and Andrew Cook, along with Principal Duncan and I, work to develop and implement the actions noted. At the school level, administrators, math and curriculum leads, and school-based math facilitators work together to implement the school actions. At the classroom level, teachers, CERTs, and math facilitators ensure that their learning reaches the student desk. Throughout the implementation of this plan at all levels, it's essential to ask ourselves these questions. What did we do differently? Who is better off as a result? And how do we know? While the MAP's impact measures have much greater complexity, they're really designed to answer these questions. The effectiveness of the MAP is being measured based on its impact on school leaders, educators, students, and families. This data that will be shared with this table in a progress report in April. So recognizing a significant amount of data in the handout in front of you, and there are many boxes, and we are not aiming to go through each and every box as, what we're hoping that we would invite you, if you want to sit aside for a moment, and listen as Principal Duncan and facilitator Luce aim to bring it to life with a few very specific examples. Principal Duncan will focus first on how school leaders and superintendents of education are engaged in the plan.
Good evening. At the system level, we offer comprehensive support to school leaders to help them achieve their math goals. We provide math bites for use in staff meetings, which help deepen educators' content knowledge through the use of manipulatives and group discussions. We encourage school leaders to promote after-school math workshops for educators and to attend these sessions themselves. So for example, in a recent session that I co-facilitated with a school-based math facilitator, administrators actively participated with educators in learning activities using manipulatives and tools that supported the upcoming course of study unit. Not only does this build educator content knowledge for teaching, but it also supports school leaders with understanding what to look for in the classroom when they are monitoring mathematics learning in their schools. At our Fall School Leaders Meetings, I guided elementary and secondary administrators through the Math PA Day content, which focused on deepening understanding of universal design for learning and differentiated instruction to meet students' needs, especially those with special education needs, as well as strategies to measure student growth. This knowledge supports leaders to feel more confident in facilitating math learning on PA Days and monitoring mathematics learning in their buildings. We also provided resources for families, including the SCDSB Math at Home Materials and information on using Knowledge Hook at Home. New this year, we are planning to develop resources to support schools to engage families in math events. In October, the math team facilitated its first of three network learning sessions for principals and school math leads. At these sessions, schools reviewed their data, established responsive math goals, and planned their first school-based professional learning community, or PLC, session with the support of the SCDSB math team. New this year in priority schools, I will lead progress meetings along with the area superintendent, school administrators, school math facilitator, and the priority classroom educators three times a year. These meetings focus on student achievement, attendance, and confidence, and the team identifies growth and plans for students who are not yet achieving provincial standard. The team then visits classrooms to see students' learning in action and to celebrate the amazing work that is happening. Now District Math Facilitator Kit Luce will share a story with you which provides you with details and examples of what this plan looks like in action for students and educators from the perspective of an elementary, sorry, from the perspective of an educator in a priority classroom.
Thank you, Principal Duncan. So this classroom I'm going to talk about is composed of diverse learners. There are multilingual learners, students with identified learning disabilities, students with IEPs, and students with a range of understanding of grade-level concepts in math, and we'll call the educator Ms. M. So Ms. M began the year with her Grade Six classroom using the SCDSB first twenty days of math. And through these lessons, she focused on getting to know her learners. She collaborated with the math facilitator to create student profiles based on diagnostics and activities in class, so she could identify areas of need and the next steps for students. And she used a growth tracker developed by the math team. And this resulted in a comprehensive understanding of the needs for students. Ms. M knows how her students prefer to learn and the challenges they face. During the September PA Day, she deepened her understanding of universal design for learning and used this learning to plan for the upcoming unit. Ms. M planned using the SCDSB Course of Study, which encouraged the use of number lines and tools like base ten blocks to represent, compare, and order decimal numbers. She used a variety of tasks so that all students could engage in the learning, even if they were not yet working at grade level. And the use of concrete tools and number lines meant that the multilingual learners could engage fully as well. So using assessment resources from SCDSB Math, Ms. M created small group lessons to support students who are working at various levels. So through October, sorry, through October, Ms. M continued her own learning through system and school-level PD, such as M2LRN, an after-school workshop, and the October PA Day. And her key takeaway was a stronger understanding of universal design for learning, in particular, the benefits for all students of pre-teaching math vocabulary and using concrete and visual representations for working with decimals. At the end of October, Ms. M and the math facilitator met to talk about the students and identify areas of growth and ongoing areas of need. And they noted the word wall and sentence prompts were actively being used by the ML learners and other students. Diagnostic assessment data allowed them to adjust IEP goals for some students so they were more aligned with grade level. Students were demonstrating stronger understanding of working with decimals using the number line and the base ten box. And the student voice survey from her class indicated that fifty-three percent of the students believed they were good at math, and sixty-four percent of students stated they liked math. Based on these observations, Ms. M has decided to continue her learning about math content knowledge for working with decimals and fractions, ensure that math manipulatives are embedded into the lessons and available for all students, use the SCDSB unit check-ins to monitor growth, and to collaborate with the math facilitator to create small groups based on student need. And while this example is based in a priority classroom, the components hold true for all of our schools. The same professional learning opportunities are available for all educators, and District Math Facilitator Cook and I are available to support administrators and math leads to access resources and plan their professional learning. Thank you.
Thank you. We have received encouraging feedback from the provincial math team about the plans through lines from our identified needs to measurable impact at all levels. Last year, the SCDSB was invited to present its planning process and key performance indicators with boards across the province, and the team was recently asked about its willingness to present again this year. Our next steps include communicating the plan with families through the Math at Home webpage and a presentation to pick later this month; planning for in-person family engagement sessions; reaching our pre-kindergarten children through enhanced resources on the Math at Home webpage; and inviting SCDSB early years and childcare partners to participate in after-school learning sessions with educators. School, sorry, school and district facilitators will continue to support educator learning through school-based PLCs and to collect data about the impact on staff and students. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that report. Do we have any questions? Trustee Talbot.
Thank you, Chair Gromit. A question to Principal Duncan or to Superintendent Fennel. In my observation, the last couple of years of going in the classrooms, that's just been a brief snapshot, but it seems like it's almost a free-range environment. It's difficult for me to understand how a teacher can grasp a hold of this, because basically, it's hard, and if people don't want to learn, we're talking about an environment where people want to learn and take advantage of these other programs and everything, but we're dealing with a lot of people, it's human nature, that don't want to learn math, it seems. So it seems to me, in my brief snapshot of what I've seen, that it's a hard environment for a teacher to teach. I don't see anything in the classrooms with times tables. I don't even know if you do that anymore. Maybe I'm really antiquated, my question here. But also, if you have students who are getting up and going and walking here, walking there, it seems like a chaotic environment for a teacher to teach in. Can you clarify that for me a little bit? Thank you.
Okay, who would like to answer? Okay, Superintendent Fennel, please.
Thank you, through you, Chair Gromit, to trustee Talbot. Thank you for sharing about your observations and certainly how math instruction has changed over time. And I'm actually really pleased that you're seeing some different things in classrooms, because we know that educators are engaging students in different ways in math content. And where it can look a little bit different than students sitting at desk and perhaps having a teacher at the front of the classroom, sharing a lesson, and all students practicing in rote practice, we recognize that students come to the math classroom with various readiness. And as you mentioned, different levels of maybe interest in subject. And so we have been working together with educators to use the high-impact, what the ministry has released as the High Impact Instructional Practices in Mathematics. And they're quite varied. And one of those practices is flexible groupings. So students might be doing some work in whole class, other work in small group. Small group instruction is very much targeted to the individual needs. We may have a group of students that need an extension activity, so they have the concept and they're ready for more depth and breadth. We may have another group of students who requires a little bit more support to understand the concepts. At the same time, what may appear that students are doing other things, walking around the classroom, we're encouraging math conversations so students do engage in collaborative problem-solving, working together, collaboration, communication in mathematics. So there are many ways that students access that math content, and we have been working together on these evidence-based practices to be able to support that in the classroom.
Okay, thank you very much. That was a great answer, and I think the question was right on as well. So I thank you for that clarification. Okay, trustee Powell.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. My question is around the Universal Design for Learning, the UDL. How are the UDL principles and the framework most impactful? How is it most impactful for special education needs? Can you just explain what UDL is and how it's used for special education students specifically?
Absolutely. So Universal Design for Learning has three components: engagement, representation, and expression, communication. And in our recent learning at the M2LRN, we really focused on each of these with an example. So for our engagement, for our students who might have learning challenges, we shared a strategy called Open and Parallel Tasks, which means that, as I mentioned in my story, there might be a question about adding and subtracting decimals. And at Grade Six, students are working with thousandths, but a teacher might offer in the same context with tenths, hundredths, and thousandths. So students can engage in the same idea about adding and subtracting decimal but at the level they are ready for. So that's an example of the open and parallel. A second example is around, as I mentioned- A second example around, as I mentioned, is concrete and visual tools. So there are lots of students who think numerically and just grab those numbers and run with it, but there are an equal number of students who think more spatially and really need to see the visual. And then the third piece that I referenced was a key component around pre-teaching math vocabulary because math vocabulary is really tricky and it doesn't translate well. So when we pre-teach it, we prepare kids to have that foundation so that they can enter into the tasks. Okay, follow-up, trustee Powell.
And so is this employing the UDL principles?
Yes, sorry. So to clarify, UDL is principles and actions that are essential for some and beneficial for all. So all of our students can benefit from learning vocabulary, but it's essential for some of our students with learning disabilities or our ML learners.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have trustee Strawn and then trustee Rafik.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the presentation, also the handout. Very helpful. I have actually two questions. One of them is around the evaluation and how we're measuring the success of the math program. We just had a presentation on EQAO, and so we can see where the numbers lie on those scores. And I'm just wondering how you relate these two aspects together, and especially because we're hearing about them both on the same night, it'd be nice to draw the parallels and the ways that your program is impacting those scores.
Okay, Superintendent Fennel.
Thank you. And through you, Chair Gromit, to trustee Strawn. If we can start with EQAO and sharing, so we use EQAO and we're encouraged to use that data along with other data sources. So the block check-ins that we do three times a year, we look at EQAO, we look at our block check-ins. The benefit of both of those assessments is we can look at how students are performing on individual math strands as well as individual skills, such as answering a knowledge and understanding question, or how are students applying their understanding or using their knowledge to respond to thinking, so more challenging problem-solving tasks. So we look at that data, we use it to inform our work with educators. So where are students struggling, in which areas? We know that number operations is one example. We know that algebra is an example in grade nine. So we are working to build the content understanding, a continuum of learning with educators through M2LRN, through school-based PLCs in the PA Days. Then we have, for example, created a growth tracker, which we have shared with schools so they can look at students who are not yet achieving a Level 3, 4, or provincial standard in the classroom, and what are the strategies? They can look very closely at what are the strategies we're going to use with these students and monitor their progress over time. So when we are stepping back and looking at a system about how effective the work that we're doing is, an example last year is we focused a great deal of time and attention in grade six with our school-based PLCs, and that's where we saw the greatest improvement and growth in EQAO at a time when the ministry stayed consistent in the provincial standard. So that is one way that we're measuring. We measure at the school leader level, but also educator knowledge, confidence, and change in practice because we want to see that it reaches the student desk. We look at student achievement and we look at student confidence in math.
Okay, and you had another question, I think, trustee Strawn.
I do. Thank you. It's really great to hear about the changes that we're making in math instruction in primary grades, like throughout elementary school and in high school too. We see it in high school as well. But just where there's a lot more, as you talked about, like that flexibility in learning and different types of tasks. And I've had a similar experience to trustee Talbot, like you go into a math class and kids are all over the classroom and they're like measuring things or they're finding objects and they're stacking stuff, like they're doing all kinds of great, interesting, fun things. One of the questions that I have is as we build their skills in these unique ways and we're evaluating them on those skills that they're building differently than we're traditionally used to, how are we responding to or how are students performing if they've gone through this kind of different type of instruction, but then how are they performing on like a traditional math test?
Okay, Superintendent Fennel.
Through you, Chair Gromit, to trustee Strawn. Thank you for your question. So just as an example, I think to share with you a couple of ways that we're measuring progress. So in the classroom, we've used this word before around triangulation. So we observe students in what they're doing. We have individual conversations with students, but I hear, or I think you might be getting to, what's the product? So what does that look like? So a couple of different ways. Schools, we're using Knowledge Hook digital math tool to monitor student learning and growth over time. And so here's one way that this particular tool mimics the type and format of questions of EQAO. So that's one way, and we have three measures of that through the school year. It is very specifically being used in our priority school classrooms. And now this year, because this is our second year using this tool, many of what we call our all schools are also using the tool. We've embedded, released EQAO questions into our Math Course of Study slide deck. The release questions are also used by educators in grade nine so that they are doing these kinds of tasks that they are prepared to be assessed on a provincial tool with. We assess and monitor growth through our block check-ins, which very much mimic what a very small version of an EQAO. So it's multiple strand. It includes knowledge and understanding questions, questions that students need to apply their understanding and problem-solving questions for thinking. So those are just a few of the tools that we have in place that are more of those standard. So what's happening and how are students accessing math, but then how are they achieving? How are we monitoring and measuring that over time?
Okay. That's great. Trustee Rafik electronically has a question.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation. It sounds like there's lots of great news stories, great things happening. You mentioned that the release time for PD is not being, is no longer funded by the ministry. So does that mean that levels of participation are school-by-school decisions, or is that direction and funding coming from the board? And then, sorry, also, my question was, would that money be coming from their basic budget or more from a board level?
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Fennel.
Thank you. Through your Chair Gromit, to Vice Chair Rafik. Thank you for noting that. We are very pleased and very fortunate that through student achievement, that release time has continued to be funded because we do see great benefit in our M2LRN and the release for PLC sections at schools. What we have noticed is an increased commitment over the last couple of years by schools to be engaging in this learning and also using some of their matching or exceeding the release that is granted through student achievement, that they're using their own PLC budgets and releasing additional educators to be able to participate. We are not seeing a decrease in the number of educators accessing this professional learning over time. In fact, it continues to increase.
Okay. Follow-up, trustee Rafik.
Great. Yes, thank you. Great. So I think you answered my question there because what I thought then is, are we having inequities throughout our schools? Are they receiving the same amount of these trainings and PLCs and such? I was very fortunate. Superintendent Webb took me along to a math PLC last year, and I found it such a wonderfully informative experience. I could really see, it was a later in the year one, so they were able to kind of talk about how things had accumulated over the years and over the year and the changes that had happened. And it was really great to see the teachers talk about their comfort levels that had changed and the improvements in their students. And it was just, it was a really great experience. So like I said, right away when you said that, I was just concerned if we're having inequities throughout our schools with those experiences.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you again for all that information. And that takes us to our Safe Schools Report 2023-2024 Pro-I-4, and I will invite Superintendent
Thank you, and thank you very much. And through the chair, in your package for tonight, please find this report for information. In accordance with PPM 120, the Occupational Health and Safety Act, and PPM 145, and to fulfill the motion passed by the Board of Trustees on September 27, 2023, that the staff provide the Board of Trustees a report annually on violence in schools. This report includes incidents related to PPM 120 that are required to be reported to the Ministry of Education on an annual basis. We have seen a decline of reportable incident types by 19.5% from this year to last. Incidents related to the Occupational Health and Safety Act and PPM 145 are tracked by the Health and Safety Department's new tracking tool entitled KICS. This tool is used by staff to document when incidents occur. Accountability is ensured as investigations are mandated to occur by supervisors. We have had 13% decrease overall in workplace violent incidents and safe school incident reports. For next year's results, we will be able to separate the workplace violent incidents and safe school incident reports. Please be aware that there can be multiple reports by staff related to the same event or incident. Incident reports are not just incidents of aggression, but also when staff interpret a threat and the potential for aggression. The SCDSB is committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of students and staff, which is demonstrated through a variety of initiatives. These initiatives are implemented across various departments, including mental health and well-being, DEI, safe and welcoming schools, corporate risk and health and safety, special education, and indigenous education. Each department plays a crucial role in supporting secure and supportive environments in schools. The SCDSB initiatives are aligned with the Education Act, PPM 120, the Occupational Health and Safety Act, and PPM 145, and are aimed at reducing PPM 120-related violent incidents. Workplace violent incidents and safe schools incidents in schools. By addressing mental health needs, promoting inclusivity, ensuring safety, and supporting diverse education requirements, the SCDSB strives to foster school environments that are safe and welcoming for students, staff, and community members. The SCDSB will continue to provide support to our students and staff related to safety and violence in schools. The SCDSB offers a range of support through our departments to make a positive impact for SCDSB school communities, which will benefit students now and in the future. The SCDSB will continue to endeavor to communicate board data, successes, and next steps. I am open to questions, and my colleagues around the table are available to answer questions related to their departmental actions and initiatives.
Okay. Thanks so much, Superintendent Young. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, Chair Lloyd, please.
Thank you very much, and through you, Superintendent Young. So that's a pretty substantial decrease in incidents. Now, I know there had been an increase, and we were coming out of the pandemic, and there was a lot of pieces to that pie. So was there anything in particular that you believe, because we're growing as a board at the same time, so our number of students is increasing and then the frequency of our incidents is decreasing, which to me isn't significantly positive. But is there one thing in particular, or do you believe there's anything that's contributing to this or has helped with it? Is it our mental health supports? Is it the initiatives within the school? And what do you believe has helped with that reduction?
Okay, Superintendent Young.
So to align with School Mental Health Ontario, I think you've hit the nail on the head. There's been an incredible alignment between Safe and Welcoming Schools, all of the work around progressive discipline, but also connecting with School Mental Health Ontario. I see a lot of combined efforts through VITRA, through our reframing bullying through Safe and Welcoming Schools. A lot of our work in Safe and Welcoming Schools is connected with the staff in mental health and well-being. I'm open to Superintendent Malpe, if he'd like to add anything to that.
Okay, Superintendent Malpe.
Sure. And thank you to the chair, to trustee Lloyd. We certainly have created some foundational knowledge around mental health and recognizing one's own mental health and recognizing when others need help. So that's been ongoing through our School Mental Health Literacy courses that we've had at all levels within our board. We certainly have revamped and reconfigured our child youth workers in our elementary schools, so given them a different purpose, and then made sure that we have implementation supports for the child and youth workers so that principals can easily interact with them and create those groups where students can speak and can learn about their social skills. So those are a few of the, I think, supports that Superintendent Young would be speaking of.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Strawn, please.
On the table that you provided, there's like the percentage of where the incidents are occurring, and a percentage of incidents occur off the school site. Am I safe to assume those incidents occur like on a school bus or on the walk to school? Like, how do we know about these things?
Okay, great question. Superintendent Young.
So those would be reported by staff. So they would happen in a range of different spots. It could be during, in a secondary school. It could be at a break, at a lunch break. It could be on a bus. It could be on their walk to school. There's just a range of opportunities for that information to get to school staff, and that's what's happening when we do receive that information. We are addressing it, and that's a good thing, that students are speaking. And I think we'll hear more about that tonight related to school climate survey and feeling comfortable and safe to talk to a caring adult in their building. So that makes me happy that they are reporting, and then the adults are able to assist with that.
Okay, trustee Foley, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair, and through you, actually, my question's for Superintendent Malpe. So you're talking about child youth workers and the groups that they set up when there's any situation. Can you just walk me through that and explain to me how it all comes together?
Okay, Superintendent Malpe.
Thank you. And through the chair, to trustee Foley. So the CYWs would be more proactive. So I hope, I didn't mean to imply that a situation would happen and that would be, okay, that incur the CYW sort of involvement. So those groups are proactive groups that get established. Of course, you know, teachers, educators, principals know the students in their school and certainly would work with parents to have those children part of those kind of learning groups before those incidents may happen. But they do as well in cases, and I would again refer to DEI department. When there's those instances, there is a CYW that When there's those instances, there is a CYW worker that will go in and deal with specific instances that happen in schools, but most of that work, we want to be proactive in those schools. So those are groups set up by educators, parents, and the child youth workers.
Okay, follow-up, trustee Foley? No, oh, you're okay. That's great. Any other questions or comments? Just looking online, I don't see any. Okay, thank you. I appreciate the time and effort that you took to have that report for us, and thank you for that. That now takes us to number five under Items for Information, 2023-24 School Climate Survey Results Pro-I-5, and that will be a report from Superintendent Young.
Thank you. And through the chair, with your permission, may I invite Manager Newton to the table?
Of course, thank you.
This evening, I'm sharing the 2023-2024 School Climate Results. On June 12, 2024, the School Climate Survey for Students in Grade 4 to 12 Key Highlights was presented to the Program Standing Committee. From that report, a Board of Trustees motion was approved on June 19, 2024, connected to School Climate Results Trended Over Time 2017 to 2024. That report was presented on October 9, 2024. This scheduled report provides highlights from the 2023-2024 School Climate Survey and shares survey results organized by the contributions and monitoring of the progress within each strategic priority. Schools use School Climate Survey results to guide the development of their school action and equity plans. There has been an overall increase in student participation from '21-'22 to '23-'24. We are pleased that the voice of over 32,000 students has been received through the School Climate Survey at an overall participation rate, 85% participation rate from grades 4 to 12. Well-being showed an increase in elementary students, reporting they knew how to handle or deal with different emotions, and students feeling positive about their future remained unchanged at 84%. The highest results above 90% in both elementary and secondary panels were on the statement, "It is important to keep going even when things are hard." Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion showed positive results, remaining at 95% for elementary students, who reported learning about indigenous peoples, and 90% learning about various cultures or identities at school. Results from the secondary panel on the survey statements mentioned above showed equally impressive results since '21-'22. Community focus on nurturing relationships and caring adults at school with elementary results at 91% on this statement. Student safety is important at school. In '23-'24, 88% of elementary students reported feeling accepted by adults at their school, and a 1% increase was reported since '21-'22. In students having an adult at their school they trusted, 83% to 84%. Results from secondary panels showed increases on both statements mentioned above. Excellent in teaching and learning showed a substantial increase of 14% in the secondary panel on this statement. I have leadership opportunities at school, 74% up to 88%. Positive results were also shown in secondary students, reporting that they had more than one chance to submit their work and feeling that they had opportunities for their voice to be heard. Collectively, from all strategic priorities on creating a culture of belonging and engagement showed a positive results within the elementary panel with respect to getting along with others, students, 88%, and feeling they belong at their school, 88%. There was a 6% increase in students being involved with their school outside of class, 75% up to 81%. In the secondary panel, there was 1% increase with respect to the statement, "I feel I belong at school," 85% to 86%, and a 5% increase in secondary students being involved with school outside of class, 60% to 65%. The School Climate Survey collects important student perception data and serves as a monitoring tool to share important information with school administrators to inform their school action and equity plan, which in turn informs their monitoring processes and goal setting for the school, and to serve as a monitoring tool for tracking progress in relation to the SCDSB strategic priorities and the operational plan. Our school administrators are exceptional at the work of school action equity planning. Their abilities to demonstrate agency on a daily basis is commendable. Specific school-related data that school administrators receive or seek out through requests from our research and decision-making department act as a springboard for the work in their schools. School administrators continue to action data from their unique communities through a range of access points, such as informal conversations with community groups, focus groups within the school, council meetings, and their work with staff. School superintendents and SCDSB departmental staff support and trust in our school administrators and their expertise to improve their schools related to school safety, bullying, diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as mental health and well-being. Thank you, and we are now open for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments? Trustee Strong.
Thank you, and thank you for this report. Lots of great news here. It's really nice to see some of the very positive results that we're seeing from our students across the board, especially in mental health and well-being. And I keep, like, every time I see this, I get stuck on this statement of, "I feel safe in this school." And I don't feel like that number is lining up with the other numbers. Like, if 88% of people think they belong in their school, and 88% of students are getting along with other students, and like 90% of students feel they can trust adults in their school, when we have those kinds of numbers, why is there a drop in feelings safe? How are we accounting for that? Like, what do we think is going on here?
Okay, Superintendent Young.
Through the chair and to trustee Strong, I think, once again, it's teasing out safety and that feeling for students. We've talked about this before related to, you know, medical safety, emotional safety, safety, moving to and from school, moving around the school, who's in the school that day. There's just so many aspects related to safety, and I think we definitely are looking to do better at teasing that out and understanding why there is some variance related to what we're seeing in other answers, because I agree, it is a disconnect for me as well, but I am not the research expert, so I'm going to defer to that person. So maybe Manager Newton has a few things to add.
Thank you. Through the chair, yeah, it's an excellent question. And I guess when I'm thinking about that result and this evening and discussing it, it's that we always do our very best to have our School Climate Survey be the best data collection tool that it can be. But we need to keep in mind that every administration of that survey is different. And just like three administration periods ago, we didn't focus as much on mental health and well-being. But through review of the survey, questions being revised, even removed, and questions that are added, the survey does change every administration time that we do it. And I know the feedback that we had about diving more into that question on safety, those questions and that feedback, they've already been added for the next School Climate Survey. So that's one thing to consider, that just as our education system is always changing, our school board is changing, so are the data collection tools that we use, or the plans that we make, whether it's math or DEI. We're always changing and innovating to match what's going on in the student population. And I think, second, when I think about that statement, it is important that it's not just the definition of what safety means to a student, and I don't know how many different research articles you could read on how to properly define that safety statement. But this year, when we did that survey, so last year, I should say, I would say the focus was we were coming out of that pandemic, and we really were exploring different things. Like, we added eight different statements for mental health and well-being that came from the well-being team. And a lot of those statements that were new, we were collecting baseline data on those results. And I think that really exploring that topic of safety is probably where we're going to go next, when we really pay. But the other thing to keep in mind is that principals, leaders in the system, navigation teams at schools are already doing that work. So they're already making requests to us with a very similar question, "Why does that statement look low when my other results I'm seeing improvements?" And the collection of that data at schools by principals or a data navigation team, it's really that student voice data that I think will already inform and make the School Climate Survey even better the next time that we do it for that domain of safety.
Thank you, Manager Newton. Do you have a follow-up? Trustee Strong?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gromit. And just as a follow-up, thank you for the fulsome response. I feel similarly that, and I was going to ask about this too, around the student action and equity plans and like diving further into getting those results. So it's really nice to hear that individual schools are contacting you, and that it's also good to hear that everybody's on the same page when they're seeing that result, and they're like, "Well, this doesn't add up. Like, we've got to figure this out and dive deeper into this." One thing that I would request is that, like, in the in-between time, between now and the next School Climate Survey, schools will collect more data on their own, and they will implement, presumably based on that data, they'll implement their own strategies to try to elevate that feeling of safety in school or address concerns that students or the school community might bring forward. So I would ask if there's a mechanism or a way that some of that information can get back to this table, just so that we continue to see that update as well, like, just as the schools and their communities are, if we can have some high-level information on what's going on throughout the system, just examples of what schools are doing or something to that effect.
Okay, thank you. Associate Director Stevens, please.
Thank you. And through you, Chair Gromit, to trustee Strong, that is something that we've been talking about at our superintendent table as well, about having principals come to this table to talk about what they've done in their school in regards to safety and in regards to their school action equity plan and getting that extra data. So we've had the same conversation, so we are looking to bring forward a group of principals to present to this table in the springtime.
All right, thank you. Chair Lloyd, please.
Thank you, and through you. I also, when I read this report and looked at the, you know, the diagrams and the charts, it all stood out to me that the one question, "Student safety is important in our schools," and it had an 80%, right? So it's saying that they prioritize it and it's safe, but then there's the one little blip there where it's not. And, you know, I'm thinking about and reflecting, I think safety and interpretation of safety is a really individual thing, right? So what I consider safe may be very different to what somebody else considers safe. And it has a whole lot of connotations to it, and so I think, you know, I'm very confident with the rest of the data that's in here, and I'm very confident, you know, when students say that they believe that their school, student safety is important at the school, that is important, right? That they believe we are doing what we need to do in schools. There's always room to do more, and there's always room to challenge what we're doing to enhance it maybe better. And so, you know, we do that through the plans that you've talked about at the individual school level. So, you know, I think this paints a more fulsome picture of the data and the feeling of students and how things are going in the schools, which I'm very confident in that. And so, you know, I'm very happy to hear that the next School Climate Survey that will be going out will delve deeper into that, which I think is important to do, and it will have the little nuances. But, you know, I think this illustrates the work we've done on well-being, and that strategic pillar has been done well, and it's important, and I think we're seeing the results in this. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Oh, sorry, trustee Powell, please.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. My question's about safety, too. Are we asking the question, "Why do children feel unsafe?" Is that part of the questions? Or is that, are we planning to do that going forward?
Through the chair. Thank you for your question. So that's something that we would ask in the next round of the School Climate Survey. We don't ask an open text at this time about why they don't feel safe or how they might interpret that term for themselves, but it's definitely a valuable dive in addition into the next survey.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, did you have something else to say? Superintendent Young?
I just wanted to, oh, through the chair and to trustee Powell, I just wanted to commend Manager Newton. Last year, when we were working through the questions, we had a group of principals at the table, secondary, we had two subcommittees, secondary principals and elementary principals. We will be tapping on shoulders again. If you noticed, there was one school, Superintendent Coffey School, Siconak, all the things that they were doing in a video that we had about a month ago. And there are principals out there that have that expertise to support research and decision-making, and we will be using our principals again.
Thank you very much. And thank you again, Manager Newton and Superintendent Young, for that report. That now takes us to correspondents, and we do not have any. Are there any other matters? Trustee Talbot, please.
Sure, may I bring up my school visits, or should I do that at the regular meeting in the month?
No, go ahead, that would be great.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you.
The Accessibility and Advisory Committee, we had an audit on Monday, on November 8, and went to Brecken Public School and Uptown Grove Public School, and at the time, and we had a successful audit, a couple items, but met with Principal Jennifer, Jennifer Cornack, I believe, and the other principal was David Brownlee. Brownlee, anyways, thank you very much for your support and for meeting the people there and visiting the school. It was a pleasure. Then Superintendent McLean, two weeks ago, had me set up to go for a visit in Midland, so I promptly went to James Keating and was intercepted by Chris Harding, who's the principal there, and told me that I'm in the wrong place. So that was, and redirected me and vectored me over to Monday's Bay. Anyways, I wanted to thank, had the opportunity of meeting Ainsley Carpenter, the principal there, and the vice principal was Anders Hagman. So thank you, Superintendent McLean, and I will be promptly get the right school next visit, and I apologize again. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Talbot. Any other matters? Sure, trustee Connors, please.
I just wanted to say that Bradford High had their trades night last night, and I just wanted to thank all the tradespeople that went out and talked to the students and the parents. That came out to it, it was very well attended. And then I wanted to also thank the students and the staff. They were there. to also thank the students and the staff. They were there. There were a lot of students and staff there. They were absolutely phenomenal. Students were very happy to show off what they've been learning. I'm pretty sure I heard grades 10, 11, and 12 students were all there in the classrooms showing off their their stuff. And the hospitality class, they were out there in droves with some awesome food, handing out to all the the parents and the students and staff, because it was from 5:30 to 8 during dinnertime. So I I'm pretty sure that's why they had a really nice, diverse food there, not just cookies, but real food. So just wanted to thank everybody for all the work that they put into the event last night.
All right, thank you. I would just like to thank everyone. Last night, we had an open house at Guthrie Elementary School for the proposed boundaries for the new school on Horseshoe Valley Road. And I just want to thank the teams that came out. And I think we had well over 100, 120 people, I'm guessing, attend. And again, everyone was busy chatting and answering questions. And again, the teams were super engaged. And I just want to remind again, families, that the thought exchange is open, I believe, for another week. Am I correct? Yes. And it's a great tool. And I think we, everybody talked about it last night, how amazing that tool is. So just encouraging folks to, you know, give their feedback. And there's also an email that they can use. So again, thank you to everyone who provided that information and attended. Okay, trustee Foley.
Chair, I had the the opportunity last week to go down to Innisville and go down to the Innisville Library. And they put a really spectacular event on. It was focused on human trafficking in the Simcoe region. And it was provided by ANGIA, the Ontario Gang Investigators Association, people from the Gangs and Guns Unit of Toronto, as well as South Simcoe Police. And it was very, very insightful. I would suggest to anybody in this room, if they want to find out more about what's going on with human trafficking in Simcoe and area, to reach out to the Innisville Library, and they'll be happy to supply you with the information. Very insightful day about what's going on in our schools and in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Foley. Any other matters? Looking online. Okay, that's great. Are there any notices of motion for next meeting? I don't see any. And that does take us to adjournment. Do I have a mover for that? Chair Lloyd and a seconder, trustee Talbot. We are now adjourned. Thank you. We'll just take a few moments before we move into our Human Resources meeting. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to our Human Resources Committee meeting tonight, November 13. And we will begin with the land acknowledgement of the territory, and that is being read this evening by Superintendent McLean, please.
Simcoe County District School Board acknowledges that we are situated on the traditional land of the Inishnaabek people. The Inishnaabek include the Ojibwe, Adawa, and Bautawami nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit people.
Thank you. We will now have the statement of respect read, and that is also being read by Superintendent McLean.
The Simcoe County District School Board is committed to creating a culture of belonging, engagement, and success for all through deliberate actions and an intentional focus in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Simcoe County District School Board of trustees will conduct meetings in an inclusive, respectful manner that upholds the principles of respect for human rights and allows all members, staff, and guests to participate fully regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, age, ability, and gender.
Thank you. And that takes us to roll call. This evening, we do have electronic participation by Vice Chair Rafiq. And we have regrets from trustee Wilson and student trustee Lad. So with the absence of trustee Wilson, we will need to elect a vice chair on a pro-ten basis for tonight's meeting. Do I have a nomination for the vice chair? Chair Lloyd, please.
Ah, yes, I nominate trustee Powell.
Okay.
If somebody would second that.
I have a seconder for that. Trustee Armstrong? Okay, trustee Powell, will you stand for that position?
Yes, I will.
Okay, that's great. And you are here. So that's wonderful. That takes us to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a mover for that? Chair Lloyd and a seconder, trustee Harrigan, all in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Are there any declaration of conflicts of interest this evening? I don't see any. We do not have any presentations and delegations or delegations. So that takes us to closed session. So do I have a mover to move into closed session? Chair Lloyd, seconded by trustee Connors. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. So we'll just take a moment to move into closed session, please. So welcome back to our public session of our Human Resources Standing Committee tonight, November 13. And we are now at items for decision, which we do not have any. Items for information, there are none. We do not have any correspondents. And that brings us to other matters. Do we have any other matters this evening? Okay, I don't see any. Any notices of motion for next meeting? I don't see any. And that takes us to adjournment. Do I have a mover for that? Chair Lloyd, seconded by trustee Talbot. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.